Welcome back, welcome back to the Detroit is Different Podcast Studios. And y'all noticed the season, Detroit summer's happening. And when Detroit summer's happening, y'all should know, this is election season, right? Election season is something that is big upon all of us as Americans. And right now, a lot of people are paying more attention because in the years of presidential election, people were caring about voting. So in engagement, in community, I met a young sister that was like engaged with everybody in a community meeting, connecting with my district two council member Callaway. And she's like, yo, I got ideas on mental health and so much more. And I told her, I was like, well, the best platform for you to connect with the people I know, right here Detroit is different. So that brings you to me, Crystal Bailey, how are you today?
I'm blessed, I'm blessed, thank you for having me.
Definitely, definitely. So with this pounding the pavement, connecting, running, this whole election thing. So first, we gonna give a little spiel, then we gonna go classic Detroit is different. Where you running, what you running for?
I'm running in District Five, excuse me, District Five. And it's a brand new district since the redistricting has been finalized just two months ago. District Five in Oak Park, Northwest Detroit, and Royal Oak Township.
All right, so for people that don't know, and you should be watching Public Comment, we were talking about this on Public Comment, you know, that's that show, me, Malakot Barrett, talk about municipal politics at Detroit every Thursday at 8:00 AM, right here on Detroit is Different, right? We were talking about the redistricting that was happening, connecting to the census numbers. And Sheri Gay Dagnago came on and was letting us know about so much of the redistricting. And a lot of it definitely did not look like the maps that we think we would have drawn up, even with the new committee. So before we get too political, just know that who you think your state rep was, who you think your city council member was, who you think your congressperson was, may have shifted right now because of the redistricting. Hence, the census counts deal directly with what happens in representation, alright? So that's not exactly Schoolhouse Rock, but a little bit of...
And they're doing the same thing with the Senate alliance right now for next year.
Definitely, so you know, things change.
Yeah, but I'm running for State Representative in District Five. And the brand new District Five that I'm super thrilled about, and when I say Northwest Detroit, I mean between Southfield Freeway and Livernoy, between Six, Seven, and Eight Mile, with a southern deviation to Puritan, between Greenfield and Hubbell.
And that's where some of those unique maps that Sheri was talking about and many other people were talking about. So check the archives.
It's called the Motown Sound Map.
I like it, you even have that on your literature?
My literature, I do, yeah. Well, I'm trying to educate the community while I'm knocking doors, talking to them, letting, sharing this information, so they understand what's happening, what's going on, and understanding where they live, you know?
And with that, let's start with those same roots, where we live, the classic Detroit is different. Your people, how many generations deep are y'all to Detroit, this area?
Oh, you know, that's a, it's deep, actually. My sister and I, we went, we've lived on Seven Mile and Evergreen, and Six Mile, I mean, and...
Even before then, like your family, when did like...
They migrated, huh?
Uh, great grandparents?
They migrated from St. Louis, my grandparents, yeah, yeah, St. Louis. One of my uncles is from St. Louis, born in St. Louis. My mom is the baby, so she was born in Detroit.
So she was the first Detroit-er?
Yeah.
Everybody else came here from St. Louis. That's an interesting connection, cuz a lot of people from the Lou, you know, the Show Me State, it's like a whole different, when we think of the migration patterns and the maps of the railroads and stuff, that's like, those people kinda end up in Chicago and all that stuff, and a different type of country, you know, it's different folks here. But you know, what was the call to action? What brought them from St. Louis to Detroit?
Um, I think it was my grandmother, she divorced my grandfather, I believe, and she's just...
She was like, I'm going to Detroit?
Yeah.
Okay, that's interesting.
Yeah, and Detroit, why was Detroit the pick? You know, that's really, I don't know.
So and upon that, what neighborhood settled, where do you remember like, or do you know of the story of where she went about, was she west, east?
She was southwest Detroit.
Okay.
Yeah, southwest Detroit.
Alright, so within that, those roots to like southwest and kinda growing up, I'm guessing your mother being the first one born here, definitely like some strong roots. Did she like go to Southwestern, and what was her story like connecting to the roots of the city?
Her story connecting to the roots of the city, you know, she's just, I know she graduated from Central.
Oh, for real?
Central High School, yeah, I don't know how that happened.
Trailblazing.
Yeah, but she graduated from Central High School, and I don't know, I really...
Those stories are stories that you go, that you be told.
I might ask mom, like, mom, how did that transpire? Yeah, yeah.
And then you coming up, what was, you mentioned like that Seven Mile neighborhood kinda for you and your sister, whereabouts?
Oh, well, I have two sisters. I'm the middle child, I have a big sister and a little sister. So we're all six years apart, so we really didn't go to school together.
Okay.
Yeah, but we lived, that was the last place we lived before we moved out of Detroit.
Okay.
And Seven Mile and Evergreen, and I went to Henry Ford High School. We also moved down the street, Seven Mile and Greenfield. So when I tell people I'm from Seven Mile, they're like, yeah, right. But I'm like, I live from Seven Mile and Evergreen to Seven Mile and Greenfield, you know?
And for people that don't know, that are like watching, there's so many people not from Detroit that sometimes follow this. Evergreen ain't, Seven Mile and Evergreen and Seven Mile and Greenfield are technically like really close to each other, but it's almost like a whole world of different like cultures, it seems like, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah.
So it's like, Seven Mile and Evergreen, like Africans over there, like...
There's some good restaurants right over there, yeah, good African restaurants, yeah.
It's like a different cultural feel where Seven Mile and Greenfield is like, if you really think of like West Side Detroit, that's...
That's the heart.
West Side Detroit, like, that's all the people from Alabama's and all that stuff.
St. Louis and stuff.
Yeah, did that business thing and everything. So what do you remember about the neighborhood as a kid?
Oh man, it was just fun, I went to Emerson Elementary, and it was just a really good time. I had my first friends, you know, that still are my friends today from that era, it was a good time.
Okay, so in this, in community, was it like one of those things? Cuz usually I think of people in politics see ideas and representation models of what they would see. What were those connections early on that you saw within community that it's like, I like this, and I believe that this shit exists? Was it the library, was it the school, was it playground?
As a youth, young person, I, you know, honestly, I didn't think about those things. You know, those things weren't the focus, it was just, I saw things for right now, right then, you know, and we did what was happening. I didn't think politics at all, anything that came up with politics, I went the complete opposite.
Interesting.
Yeah, it's just not something I was interested in as a young child.
So that definitely leads to like, what was the thing that triggered your mind to say, okay, things can exist politically that impact where this is coming from for people, hence the community dynamic?
Well, just when I had, I guess when I had my daughter, you know, at 24 years old. And it was just, what I did was fashion, fashion was my thing, I was very creative. I liked to just make things happen from nothing, you know, and just create it. And when I had my daughter, I started, I was doing fashion shows for other people. And even in high school, I would do fashion shows, I was a fashion show coordinator. But when I got to graduate from high school and just started doing fashion shows for myself, once I got pregnant, I thought, oh no, I can't do fashion shows, I can't model, I can't do any of this anymore because I'm pregnant. And my daughter's father at the time said, well, do your own fashion shows and I'll do the marketing. And so I started producing fashion shows. And that was the, I guess, community aspect of it, because we had to go to the community to get the resources.
Places, clothes.
Yeah, everything, we had to reach out, you know?
That was like the moment engaging you. So you mentioned like even at a young age in fashion, was it one of those things that like creating, like could you sew and all of that stuff?
Oh, yeah.
Even at like a young age?
Well, I would say young ages and like 15, 16.
Yeah, 15 to me is, uh, I was going, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah, I took an interest in it and designing, you know, sketching, yeah.
How did you learn?
Self-taught, self-taught, yeah.
Okay, so one day you just walked in the house with a sewing machine and your mama was looking at you like...
Well, no, no, that wasn't that great self-taught. But no, like as far as hand sewing, stitching, you know, and sketching and stuff like that was my thing.
For real?
Then, yeah.
And you self-taught yourself that?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Already interesting. But for the people that know, they may be like, it ain't that difficult, it looks difficult.
No, not at all, I mean, you know, of course I perfected...
It takes patience.
It definitely takes patience, but you know, watching my mother and my grandmother, of course, watching, you know, and just mimicking, you know? Because they would sew, I mean, I'm not saying we're seamstress, by no means I'm saying, oh, there's a, we need to put this button back on, or this hole together, we gotta fix this up. But you know, just watching the technique, you know, it's just the basic technique.
So from there, I'm guessing like in fashion, was it one of those things that, like were you like the fashion magazine person, looking in them, figuring out different styles? Or were you more so just like, I'm gonna just do something creative myself? Like at the thrift store, putting stuff together from like the store, thrift store, and matching stuff like that?
Well, it was, that was in high school, you know, after, high school was my thing to do thrift, you know, stuff. But after high school, I was more into the production of it, cuz you know, I was produced. So I graduated from Oak Park High School. I went to Henry Ford for two years, then I moved to Oak Park, when my family moved to Oak Park in 1998. And so when area code was still 810. So we moved to Oak Park, I graduated from Oak Park High School. And during that last two years, fashion shows, doing them at the school was the thing to do. I've had Elijah Connor in the fashion show, who's now a gospel singer, I believe. But it was a very fun time producing fashion shows, so I just liked the putting things together.
Okay.
You know, because it wasn't, you couldn't get plus-size models in fashion shows, in New York fashion. I wasn't tall enough or thin enough to walk a runway. So I had to do, oh, you're better for print, you know, I would do print, but I wanted to always walk on the runway. So because I wasn't tall enough or thin enough, I created a platform for those who looked like me to be able to do New York Fashion Week, you know, or even Paris Fashion Week, which my company both has done.
Oh, that's big.
Yeah.
So that naturally leads to your company, how did you build? Like, and I guess that story is, as you say, like where the community kinda comes together in this?
Yeah, having to, you know, well, it was, cuz I was pregnant, so it was a hobby. You know, I just started producing fashion shows for myself as a hobby.
What was the first fashion show you produced?
Well, it was in the basement of a nightclub, Grand Central Lounge in Detroit.
I remember Grand Central Lounge, shout out to Grand Central Lounge.
Yeah, it was the very first one, and then the next one was the Charles H. Wright Museum, yeah. So it grew, so that, I say that to say that it grew so much so that I had to make it a business. You know, I couldn't keep saying this as a hobby, you know, I had to make it a business in any form or to a...
How, as you went out to recruit and bring this together, this is like the community dynamic, similar to some of the stuff we do, but how were you approaching people and getting them involved? What was like the energy around it? Cuz it's many people connected to a fashion show.
Yeah, well, you know, it's, it's being out, you know, being involved, being engaged, staying on top of what's happening, you know, talking to people, introducing what I have going on, you know, putting something in their hands, you know, going to the local businesses and barber colleges and schools, and talking to the instructors, the teachers, to get the students to come do the hair and makeup for the shows, and while they're getting credit hours, you know, just working together.
Okay.
Phenomenal, I mean, it still is phenomenal things to do.
So the brand of the show, what's the brand?
Walk Fashion Show.
Walk Fashion Show, you all should be familiar, it's like one of the largest entities that I've known and seen. I wanna think, I was probably at that very first fashion show, I was just like at Grand Central Lounge.
Okay, that's what's up.
And it's like, we saw the people like walk through.
That's what's up.
And I was like, okay, she fine.
I was six months pregnant at the time.
The sad motto, you know what I'm saying? She fine, okay, this is interesting, you know what I'm saying? It's like, let's turn down the Jim Jones for a second, stop bawling.
Yeah, it was a nice time.
So, so in this, you mentioned parenthood was some of the gateway that really opened your eyes more so to like the functionality and resources for community.
Mm-hmm, yeah, volunteering at her schools, you know, being at the school, cuz I love my child immensely. Like, she's, she is my heartbeat outside my body, you know? And so she'll go off to school, you know, some way I'll make my way up to the school so I can just be around and volunteer, and then once I'm volunteering, it's like, now I'm seeing the need for parents, you know? And getting engaged with the parents and hearing what the parents had to say. And then we have PTA meetings for, we create fundraisers for, from the community to raise money, to help the students, you know, it's just, or the teachers, Appreciation Week, you know?
So that's, that is very grassroots centered, seeing from that lens, especially when we think of, depending upon the school, the difference in the way parents can even be present to assist in the leadership of it. So like, seeing a school as a community resource, and the energy around it welcomes in parents.
Absolutely.
Sometimes the lens can be tougher, depending upon the school, the district, and other things, and even the leadership at the school. My mom was big in my school, which would sometimes be like, oh, ma, why you up here? And then, other than that, especially shout out Northwestern, that kinda led to me eventually being the president of Northwestern's alumni for a long time. Shout out Jerry Williams, that's the president now, and like, schools kinda connect directly through that student to seeing the peak into so many of those families. What were some of the things that you were seeing that you feel like should be more resourced in the lives of the children, hence their families?
That's a big question, cuz it changed throughout her...
Throughout the years of her growing.
Yeah.
So hey, let's go, you know?
Cuz I mean, she's been to a few schools, you know, and I don't know. That's pretty big, I don't know how much...
I'd say go there, I mean, let it be known, because this is where I think, when I think of like the initiation and their heart for being more present in community, with community, that's where it starts. So what were some of the things that it's like, I think if this were to happen, or if that were to happen, it could help everything come together more?
Yeah, you know, I was speaking, not on my daughter's experience, but just as being as a vice president of the Oak Park School Board while there, you know, and being present in that capacity, and seeing that, thank you, and seeing that what was the need there? And, and the need was the connection between the school and the city. There was a big, you know, there was, there's a need to bridge the gap between the school district and the city as a municipality. And what I thought could help with that would be youth assistance. You know, how youth assistance can be that funnel to the parents to help resource. So if a parent needed issues with their child running away, or having behavioral health issues, or mental health issues for that matter, they could go to youth assistance and gather the resources needed to help them navigate through the situation, before saying, well, you can file a petition with the court, and they can go to juvenile, and you can have them help, rather than that be the first, you know, option.
So the story you're speaking of is a story that tragically has existed in the lives of so many people. If you read Youssef Shakur, Dr. Youssef Bunchi Shakur's autobiography, Window to My Soul, he talks about some of the challenges his mother had, where his mother submitted him as like to the state because of some of the, like I say, some of the behavioral challenges, which I think were extensions of some of the attention and mental health due to the conditions of things happening in and around his life and their family life at the time, soon after his grandfather passes, and founding Zone 8 the game, and so many other things. And this is also in the story of DMX's life, rest in peace, the rapper DMX, like, and it's a common story. So you presented something where, that's a new concept to me, and that actually I think could be something that would be more powerful, because a school stepping in that already has more of a understanding and a relationship with this child, as opposed to the justice system stepping in, that is going to have to take more of a, how do I put this, more of a, more of a standard view of whom everyone is, as opposed to having an understanding of the nuance of who this child is, who their family is, what their background is, that's not gonna be taken into consideration the same way.
Yeah.
Hence, this is the movement of like, you know, a lot of social workers that do exist in schools. And that movement kinda began soon after, I believe, I kinda graduated in 2001, but...
2001, me too.
Oh, shout out 01, alright. So like, even empowering that more to expand beyond just where that stands. What do you see like, cuz this is the type of work that you can do from a position as a legislator, how do you see the vision of something like that coming together? Where schools are more empowered for helping the families in matters like this? Like, you gave an example, but how will people, like how will the justice system buy into that? Because I also think like the juvenile detention center that's over here off, it's like right there in Highland Park, it's like off Glendale, I don't even know if a lot of people know it exists. It's like Glendale and Hamilton, you know what I'm saying? How do you think the justice system will buy into something like that? And advocate for that? And I guess it's more about us as people buying into advocate for that?
That you hit it right on the head, exactly, it takes us. It really does, because, I mean, that's how I, like I said, as a youth, I stayed away from politics. Politics is not where it's at, you know what I mean? It's just, it's nasty, it's just, I went the other way. But I took kids on jail tours, I worked for the Sixth Judicial Court, Oakland County Circuit Court, for juvenile probation.
Wow.
And I would volunteer and take kids on jail tours. And I would take them on the jail tours, and we would go, and I would see more than half of the inmates in there appeared to be mentally ill. And I thought, why is this? You know, and I did research and saw in the early 90s, our governor at the time, Governor Engler closed all the mental health facilities in the state. And they landed them homeless, dead, or in jail. And that's the same thing that is happening with our youth. They're going to these detention centers for behavioral health issues, and they need to be somewhere getting rehabilitated. And yet, they're sitting in detention centers, waiting to get rehabilitated, but there's no, there's a minimum state-funded facilities for kids, two for girls, three for boys.
Very few, and that leads to so many of the other challenges, as what you bring up with Governor Engler, and shout out to Kenyatta Stevens, that leads Black Family Development. When she was on Detroit is Different, and we were speaking about this, and some of that same call to action that she sees and witnesses, as she kinda expanded on it, as around that time, the thought process was, okay, we don't necessarily need to have facilities for people, and children included, we can medicate some of these issues. You can use drugs to solve the problems that are quote-unquote behavioral, as opposed to counseling and care and different things, like from that lens. What's your take on this? Because that's also become more prevalent, like really, I think, during that time, you know?
Well, to my knowledge, the difference between mental health and behavioral health is medication. So some behavioral health is an addiction. So whereas mental health is like bipolar, schizophrenia, you know, mental disabilities and that, whereas things that can be managed with just therapy, like anxiety can be managed with breathing techniques, different coping skills, mechanisms that can help you get through it, just like a different rehabilitation. Whereas medication is, you know, something that is prescribed. That's why you see a psychiatrist and not a psychologist, you know, cuz one can prescribe drugs, obviously.
Do you see the relationship between both? And sometimes I feel that the answer and the solution seem to kinda like whitewash of like, okay, just give everybody drugs, as opposed to giving people, and some of the counseling is just somebody to be heard, like listened to?
Yeah, and that's, and that's the constituents as well, you know, wanting to just be heard, just be listened to. Just like with those in detention centers or jail, they just wanna be heard, people in general, we just wanna be heard. And it really helps, and if you have the right therapist, cuz you have, it has to be the right therapist that can sit there and hear you out, you're basically just working through this yourself, you know? So that's why it doesn't always take medication, you know?
So in this, your role from, you like became like a complete diving in further. It's like, so from volunteering in school, as your daughter's there, from the parent lens, to school board?
Buying a house.
Okay, alright, let's go in there, let's go there, that'll definitely change their political views with.
Yeah, buying a house, so I bought my home in 2019.
Okay, oh man, right before COVID.
Yeah, thank God.
Interesting, that was a...
Thank God, you know, yeah, shout out to my realtor at the time, Hill Realty, yeah. Yeah, he's an awesome guy, his business is in the district, Livernoy, yeah. So he sold me my home, and I just was very not ready, I just not ready to buy a house. So I didn't think like, wait, you know, you know, just scared, just of the unknowns, you know? And, you know, I did it, Bailey and I, I did it, my daughter. So we bought this home, and taxes seemed to be okay, you know, seemed to be alright. But that next year, that, what happened? I said, what happened? My taxes shot up, and I'm at like 7,000, you know? I don't know if that's a lot to everybody, but to me...
It's like this, as I tell everybody, a lot is a lot to wherever you at, because when I was 10, $10 was a lot.
My goodness, yeah, my taxes went up, and so that made me pay attention to taxes, you know, you know, my equalized tax value, you know, just wanting to know, what is, you know, escrow, you know, wanting to...
You start paying a whole lot of attention when that, when that fee comes out.
Yes, sidewalk programs.
It was like $750, $750, and then the next year it jumps up to $1,500, and you be like, yo, whoa, what's going on here, my G?
My goodness, yeah, so I... My goodness, yeah, so um that was, that was something, you know? And then COVID and I got a really low interest rate at the time, but then COVID happened and they say, hey, you can.
Refinance.
And I had just bought my home like eight months ago and they were like, go ahead, you know, or however long it was. It was when COVID happened from April to March, um, yeah, cause I bought my home in April. But anyhow, so they said refinance, it, it wouldn't hurt you, you just, will get you to a one percent. I'm like, a one percent interest rate? I'm like, well, I already had three, all that paperwork, you know? But yeah, I didn't bother to do it, but and probably should have.
So, so from, from that lens, that's where the political concept. So what was it? And usually people are like behind you, like, you should run, you should run, you should run, you should run for something, you know?
No, I had no one behind me saying you should run.
Interesting.
No.
Okay.
No, um, I um, I ca- came home from my, um, that, the office. And when I was working part-time for the juvenile detention center. And I came home and the guy I was dating at the time, he says, I was just complaining. I said, I don't know, how can I fix this? These, these kids have nowhere to go, you know, and I was complaining about the detention centers. When they go and be state wars, they have nowhere to go. And then the tradition, the transition, once they go from juvenile and then they enter back into community. It's like sometimes these kids age out of the detention, the holding part before they even get rehabilitated. And then how are they transitioning back? So I came home just complaining, he said, well, the only way you can change it is if you change the laws. I said, well, how do I change the laws? And he said, you gotta run for something. I said, well, what do I run for? He said, you just gotta be in office. And um, he looked and said, well, this seat is open. And I said, okay, and I filed.
Interesting, so from there, that's when it starts.
Yeah.
Getting out and getting signatures, but even before signatures, when you get on the phone and you call your support system. So I'm a big, I'm a big person in everybody's in life, whatever decision you make has stakeholders. Whether they support you or don't support you, those stakeholders really matter. So that's family, that's friends, that's uh your partners that you've done things with before, like business ventures and things like that. If you're dating somebody, that person's a stakeholder in everything you do, as much as you. Think that it, they're not, they are, uh you have your daughter, your daughter's a stakeholder. So like, depending upon, and this is just a little bit of Kari Frazier wisdom, whatever decision you make, cause I make a lot of decisions. That sometimes will not support it from all the stakeholders. If they're in support of it, usually the wave of the energy moves better all the time. If there's a little dissonance or disagreeance, even if that disagreement is, I like this, but I don't necessarily think you're ready or your presence of mind isn't there. It just becomes so much more difficult. So how did you turn this around? I guess the first person you're gonna tell is who you were dating, like, you know what, I'm taking you up on your offer. What was the response of like the family, the friends, the people, uh before you even go out and get your petition signatures?
Uh, well, the guy I was dating, he was, he was, he was a strong advocate, you know, um, he. He was my introduction to politics, actually, you know, his, his uncle was Benny Napoleon. And he, Benny Napoleon adopted me as affectionately cared for me as his niece.
Rest in peace, rest in peace.
Definitely, very great man. And that was the closest I've ever, you know, came to.
A politician running and running.
Absolutely, you're seeing it, you know, firsthand.
Actually, I believe naming the street in his honor this weekend coming up.
Yeah, yes, and um, and so. He was, he was, he was behind me and I told my mom and my mom says, you know, and my mom's not a politician or interested. Even, you know, she's, she's aware, you know, and the more and more she's getting involved. But at that time, she just said, well, how are you gonna change it, you know, what are you gonna do? You know, how are you gonna get people to listen? You know, she asked those types of questions, which were hard questions but needed. I got the support from my sisters and, and them, but like, they just didn't really understand. They just knew they were supporting me, but didn't really underst- stand.
But sometimes the support of you.
Yeah, yeah, isn't.
More instrumental than the support of it.
Yeah, 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 is enough, yeah.
Sometimes when people support it, they be like, you should do it.
Yeah, and they wanna tell you how to do it too, like, not do it this way. Yeah, but you know, the support, it is, it constantly grows.
What was uh, what was your daughter's response?
Oh, say, she was um, she was, she was hyped, you know? Because she's actually run for student council.
Okay.
Two years in a row for.
About young baby.
Fourth grade and fifth grade, yeah, student council at her school. So yeah, she was a strong opponent about it and she, she was excited. Of course, her dad was excited because we were able to just share, you know, the stories. That I've come in contact with, like a, a woman whose daughter is fifteen years old, I share this story. When I'm speaking to people to get them to understand the, what is happening. But this woman has a fifteen-year-old daughter and her daughter, she took her daughter's cellphone from her as a form of punishment. And her daughter jumped on her and she had to call the police on her daughter. The police came, took her daughter and charged her with domestic violence and assault. And they did a psychiatric evaluation on her daughter and saw that she was diagnosed with bipolar disorder. But they held her in the detention center. And she's trying to get out of a detention center and get somewhere to be rehabilitated. But she's on a waiting list, so she's sitting there with these mental disabilities. Cause she's diagnosed with more than just bipolar disorder, but mental disabilities being mentally abused, you know? She should be somewhere getting help, not handcuffs. And that, that in it, in itself is just heartbreaking. It makes you wanna do something, you know?
And the story that you share is such a, that's such a like, can happen like that story. And as, as I've talked to so many attorneys and some judges here and all that stuff over time. Like, the justice system, like a lot of the systems and institutions, are, the solutions from it. Are more so than anything ever, is probably not the solution that you think in your mind is gonna happen. Rarely walking in court, even if you win, I'm not saying you lose. But it's not gonna turn out, like even that whole, I'm gonna sue you, like, it's not usually gonna turn out, you thinking like, I'm gonna scare this kid. I'm gonna call the cops and, you know, you're thinking that that may be the resolution. Cause as the justice system starts intertwining in whatever the issue is, as it follows through, it's protocols, it's procedures, it's paperwork. It's, it's follow-ups, uh it was a kind of viral video similar to that where it was a, a young lady that was. I mean, this is a common, is, you know, common occurrence, but it was just caught on camera phone of uh camera phone. And the, the, the police officer's badge where young lady staying with a boyfriend, they look like early twenties. Um, the, the girlfriend's apartment that the boyfriend is helping pay rent in. She wants the, she wants her boyfriend out, so she calls the cops on him. And then in the frustration of communicating with the police officers, and you can clearly see, alright, the way she's communicating, she's having like a mental break here. So she hits the officer, like in a, as the officer's trying to detain her, and now she's charged with assault. So s- and I mean, this is just an example that you guys can probably find online, but I mean, living in a neighborhood like mine or just living in America. Stuff like this you'll see all the time, because the resolution, i- in as much as people say like, the justice system is in jest. Lord knows, Kari Frazier can see that. Uh on so many levels, but also I'm understanding of like procedures and protocols have to be followed. And when those procedures and protocols are followed, it's rarely from a like, oh yeah, you know, just take that back now, I don't wanna sue you no more. I can't. The ball started rolling. Something needs to happen, it's gonna cost you money and cost me money. Like, so, so this is where what you speak of, like another solution. If there was a place for like a, a, a school entity for that mother to call. Other than the police officers to call, now you have a, 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 a more understanding body to say, alright, look. She, we gonna, we, your daughter gonna spend the night over here with the counselor. We gonna talk, we gonna calm it down for a second, listen to her, let her be heard, then sit and then rebut. And we gonna chill some things out and then we're gonna resolve this as opposed to the tragedy of the matter that you just presented.
Yeah, because I mean, that woman has been fighting to get her child, you know? But she, and you know, she.
And then it's a, it's a do, it's a fighting to get the child and then it's, it's tough because now, even from the way you told the story. People will look at it like, well, you kind of called her, you know, you wanted us to resolve the problem.
And then the system's frustrated, yeah.
Guilt yourself about the whole thing. Back to like, in your mind, you didn't think that this would have been the resolution that would have come, come about.
It's a tough si- situation and it's traumatic too. And, and we have to understand trauma for what it is, you know, we minimize trauma. But a lot of us have experienced trauma and because we minimize it, we don't call it for what it is.
So how um, how would you say that uh? I- in this space, galvanizing the support of like, let's just go to the people. When you tell those stories and you're out campaigning, how are the people responding to your efforts and your vision? Of finding more solutions to resolve issues like that?
Well, they definitely are interested in the cause, they definitely are interested, they're listening, they're taking heed to it. They're actually excited that I'm even talking about it, you know? I sit on the Behavioral Health Advisory Council for the state of Michigan. And the Michigan Department of Health and Human Services has a budget of thirty-seven point seven billion dollars. And they allocate one percent towards state psychiatric and mental health services, which is. And then they say we're in a mental health crisis, well, what are we, what are some solutions, you know, what can we offer, what can we do? And the dis- the support from the community would be, you know, just offering their needs. You know, what is it that they want, you know, letting me know so that I can advocate for them. I know we need to reallocate that budget, you know, that one percent. We can, and, and, or how are we utilizing that one percent, first of all, you know? Are we getting the programming and now even the programming, cause I sit on the board. So they come with all these new assessments and these programmings, but the success rate, how well are they performing? You know, are we having returning people or, I mean, is this recidivism? Are the, what's, what's, what is this data, you know? And I, I think if we collect the data properly, we can, you know, help solve or combat this crisis that we're living in. One percent is just not enough, or we're just not using it properly.
Okay, alright, so now, so now in that space, uh I definitely see more of the vision. And as we say, the, the flyer comes to life more in this conversation.
I tried to put it like, make it make sense, you know, I, this is my best piece yet, you know?
Oh, I mean, it, you know, but I'm a, as you see.
You die, I mean, we're definitely diving into it.
We gonna talk, so uh as, as we get closer to the end of this conversation uh and podcast, and thank you so much. I, I want to speak about in the campaigning. Getting that message across, how are people connecting to the message through the campaigning, when you're, when you're meeting with the people, when you're handing out the information and literature? And what are you hearing as you're listening to the people of what they're looking for?
You know, they are very responsive, they are very happy to have someone who is a champion for mental health. I mean, I am a champion for mental health, but I'm not, you know, only running on mental health. I'm, I'm also running on eradication of gun violence, you know? The gun violence is the number one cause of death in our youth amongst any other way of dying. Car accidents, anything, the, it is the number one cause of death, which is ridiculous. I met a mother just while I was campaigning, passing out my literature. And this mother was stapling flyers to the wall, flyers to um the poles, light poles. And I, I said, what are you, what are you passing out? You know, here's my literature I'm, I'm passing. She says, my son was murdered. And I said, oh, I'm sorry to hear that, and she says fifteen, and I'm like, I'm sorry. She said, my only child, yeah, I'm passing out, you want something to pass out? And I said, sure, sure, I'll take, you know, I'll take some too. And you know, she, he was a young man that was murdered in the. Um Western Hotel in Southfield in February, his name is um Tyler Johnson. And she wants to get the word out, you know, that we should not be losing. And, and there no, and this was in a hotel and, and it was crowded and somebody knows something, but no one's saying anything. So no one is being held accountable for this. And she is outraged, and as a mother of an only child, I cannot imagine um what she's going through. But she is really want to get the word out of what happened to her child. And I really want to get the word out that now this has happened to her child and it has happened due to gun violence. Which is something somebody needs to be held accountable for. And within my platform, my, my, this race, um. The gun manufacturers need to be held accountable. And we need to create laws that hold them accountable for putting, putting these guns in our community. Making it so accessible to use, they have a Glock, for instance, has a handgun. That you can make it from a handgun to an automatic rifle with a, a cheap apparatus that makes it a switcher. And what is the need for that in our communities?
Okay, oh man, alright, so I would say um, a couple of things uh in reference to that. Like I always say, I think America has a violent culture, period. Also, eh, when, when looking at this issue and it's, it's a, it's a very layered issue. Because of our society, there are more guns than people in America. And, and many gun owners that are gun owners own multiple guns, you know? And then growing up in a neighborhood like mine, like Twelfth Street, Davidson. Uh being aware of what we see as the, the, the thought process, which kind of goes into. I don't wanna say mental health, but it's a, it's a mentality, it's a psychology, it's an idea, uh men and women, uh just even coming here. Like, most people think, okay, I need to be strapped if I'm over here, uh meaning I need to be carrying a pistol, you know? So um, it's an ideology that I think a, a lot of us have accepted in America. Even, even this weekend, like everybody's talking about Bad Boys Four, right, and watching the Bad Boys movie. I know if I go see the Bad Boys movie, I'm probably going to watch uh Mike Larry and I forget uh. What's Martin's character's name, I don't know. Martin's character's name. I'm probably gonna witness them possibly kill two hundred people. At minimum, within two hours. I think that most Americans, unlike a lot of other societies, have justifiable reasons why a person should be murdered. Meaning like, we have an idea of, these are the reasons I would kill somebody. And I'm just generalizing this, right? The best way to kill somebody is a gun. How do we supersede this in a society that's so violent? Even when we look at the lens of history, and like I say, for our entertainment, I mean, I'm not looking at just Bad Boys Four. I mean, I like John Wick, I grew up with action movies and stuff like that and, you know, people shooting people sideways and stuff like that. And then it's like the justify, justifications, you know, like. And then from one angle, as much as my, my favorite uh genre of music and hip hop. and then from one angle, as much as my, my favorite, uh, genre of music and hip hop, hip hop even justified stuff. Like I'm, I'm, I'm hearing the reasons of, okay, these are the reasons, if you owe me money, disrespect my family, you disrespect my girl, you disrespect me. These are, these are grounds for violence. Depending upon the level of that, that could be grounds to murder you. And then on the flip side of that, neighborhoods like mine, I don't care, it's like some people that are doing things like that, no matter how egregious the act is, will turn around and say, aw, man, why you kill my brother? It's like, well, your brother just killed, uh, half this person's family. And it's like, that don't mean nothing, we killing your family now, like it, and it's cyclical. You know what I'm saying? How do you open up the lens of that? And we shift more towards life mentally, when I would say the culture itself is so violent. So this is usually my rebut to anyone that speaks this, but especially a lot of politicians. How do we open up more in a life cycle perspective in a society that is so violent? And we almost ha- always have the justifications in these discussions, like, but at the end of the day, you still need to be strapped. Even right now, like with the political election, it's so much people are saying like, you don't know what's gonna happen if that forty five get back in office, these crazy people. So that means basically, the idea of this group of people, and I'm not necessarily saying that that's a wrong idea either, you know what I'm saying? How do you, how do we start shifting towards saying, okay, let's not justify death in the first place?
Well, not justify death in the first place, that's-
Of mur- through murder.
That, that's pretty.
And I know it's a heavier question.
We'll be here all night, like. But no, um, I, not, I, I don't know how we could get them to not justify death. But that's just second nature, what we've just been accustomed to do. I mean, we're, we're rushing to go sit for two hours and watch it. I mean, some of us like, really enjoy violent movies, you know? It's just what we put into ourselves, so that's just, it's a self thing. But I think holding gun matter of fact, what you said is that they, they are, there's laws now that, you said, everybody has a gun and, and with, you know, this new president or possible or whatever. We all gonna need to be strapped, so.
These, I mean, these are arguments I hear, you know what I'm saying?
Okay, right, so, um, the, we, this is conversations we need to have because there's, we have to and the safe storage laws and the red flag laws. These, these gun laws that have just been put in place will affect the black community more than anyone. And which is why we have to educate on these laws. Safe storage is a law that was put in place February of this year, that says your gun has to be stored in a lockbox. But like you said, if we have a gun, we have more than one, and what good is it to us if it's in a lockbox?
That would be the argument that people would say.
Yeah, but that's the law now. I- and, and it's gonna affect our communities more than any other place. So we have to educate them. And, and it's, it's, it's in a lockbox as lo- if it's a minor is around, that, that law specifically, the red flag law. I mean, the safe storage law, excuse me, the safe storage law means that if there's a minor around that that gun has to be stored in, in a lockbox. And so, um, education, informing the community about the laws and, and education on how to properly use a gun, you know? We have guns in the community, so we need to educate how to use them properly. The, the training that is being done. I mean, I've known people who've gotten it without training, you know, which is unfortunate. So we have to educate in every capacity. There is the laws and the use, you know, all around.
I would, um, so I, I, I'll just walk out here on this and say, if you move forward with something like that, I would love to see a forum just on, what are the reasons you would use it in the first place? And if we could build more consensus around that, then I think we're moving in the right direction. It'll move from like, oh, he unfollowed me on Instagram. It's like, no, but I knew what that meant, that's disrespect. And I mean, it sounds crazy, but these are depending upon the, 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 the heightened emotions. Like especially I remember when I, a- at that younger age, when you talk about teenage years, like younger age, um, all that testosterone, all of the, a- all of the, the ego. Things will manifest fast. Like I think of, uh, I don't even know if you remember this story, uh, as we get closer to a rap, but it was like, uh, we were living over in Russell Woods, but behind Winterhalter, it was a fourteen year old that was shot. And the kid that shot the kid was somebody we used to always play basketball with, and he got charged with, uh, you know, he got charged with a life sentence at like fourteen, you know what I'm saying? All over, they said it was over the Jordan basketball sco- shoes, but it was like, uh, it was a it was a jealousy that was like growing all summer. You know what I'm saying? So it went back further. And he knew from, um, the guy that his mom was dating, he was like, okay, I knew he always strapped because a guy kinda in the street life. So he knew at the time when he would be asleep to take one of his pistols and deal with this on the basketball court over what seemed like an act of taking some Jordans. But it was so much more to it to all of us, we're kids, we're looking at this and it's like, damn, that's crazy. You know what I'm saying? What, looking at the news and all of this and, um, the, the I, I think, I think, like, they're, they're here in the culture, it's like racism, like, it's here. How do we function around it? If this is going to be in our society, not saying we're honoring it, not saying we're accepting it, but we have to function within it because it's an entity in our community. So how, wh- what will become the, the ways we engage with it? And I've yet to see that, and as much as I'm speaking it, talking. If you wanna leave something like that, eh, in, in the office and, and, and beyond and further, I would love to do that because I don't think most people are even asking themselves, w- that own guns, what would make you use it? People just blanketly say, to defend myself, and it's like, okay, that's
Yeah, yeah.
You know what I'm saying? What does defend yourself? Because technically, I look at guns, and this is me, I look at as gun is to be drawn to kill somebody. Some people see it in different ways. Rest in peace Dex Osama, is a classic example. Some people see guns. Lord knows, even in saying that, I know the people that I know that know him gonna be like, what you mean? Some people see guns as more like, okay, it can result, it can, um, de-escalate a situation cause they see how real it is. And I'm not saying that's right or wrong, cause sometimes that can happen. But the next person sees it as, this is a tool to kill.
Definitely, I mean, it is a, it is a high, it's, it's a rifle, you know, it's a gun. It's a, it's a violent weapon, you know, it, it is a, it's a, it's a weapon, you know, so. It is, I believe it's used to kill. So, I mean, most people, not most people, people use it for hunting, you know?
Yes.
To kill, you know?
True, you could get a bow and arrow too.
It's a weapon, you know, you know, but it's a high power wef- weapon, high power weapon, so. Um, yeah, yeah, I think if we create laws that hold the gun manufacturers accountable. We could start there, as well as ask the gun users, what are we using it for? You know, tho- those are, it's starting there, I think it, it would definitely help the situation. Because i- it's the number one killer. And, and the kids are not only killing each other, but they're killing themselves.
That too.
And, and that goes back to the mental health proponent, that it like I said, mental health got me involved in politics.
All interrelated.
Yeah.
Alright, so I know that was like a heavier note. But, you know, politics get heavy, so now I'm gonna hit you with the classic Detroit is Different story. Questions, as we close out. But even before then, if people wanna support, if people wanna connect with you, where do they connect with you, where do they support, where do they find out more? If you are in the District Five, or know people in District Five, how do they connect?
Well, like, can I tell them what District Five is again, it is? All of Oak Park except for Precinct Nine. Royal Oak Township in Northwest Detroit from Southfield Freeway to the Avenue of Fashion between Six, Seven and Eight Mile, with a southern deviation between Hubble and Greenfield, just at Puritan. So it's a unique district, seventy-five percent black, and I'm the only black woman on the ballot, which is-
That's, that's not surprising.
But, and you can find me, uh, um, my social media is all Crystal Bailey, Vote Crystal Bailey or Instagram Official Crystal Bailey. And, um, my website is WeVoteCrystalBailey.com.
Alright, there we go. And, uh, definitely, you all know, pound the pavement, if you support the message, if you wanna see black representation in a seventy-five percent black district, you need to support Crystal Bailey, you know what I'm saying? And part of the black understanding is the cultural understanding. Being these connections, Crystal's lived in a community like you, can connect and knows the understanding, can listen. Cause that's part of that cultural understanding. So, classic Detroit is different. Very first car, year making model, year you got it.
Oh, my car was a, uh, it was a Camaro. Yeah, with T-top.
Aw, man.
Yeah, and it was, uh, ninety-seven.
Okay, okay, year you got it.
And I got it in two, uh, was it ninety-nine?
Okay, where's the first place you went when you got it?
To my girlfriend's house.
Ah, so then y'all crew, so then from there, y'all hung out?
Yeah, yeah, like, can you believe I got this?
Man, so there you go, you was the designated driver.
Well, she had her car before me.
Oh, okay, so you was, you was the, uh, you was the passenger. Finally, you didn't have to pay gas money.
Yeah, exactly. Gas wasn't that bad though. Yeah, five dollars, you know, she was good, just give me five dollars, alright.
For all of you younger folks, that was way back in the day. Way back in the day, five dollars would actually, you know, you drive everywhere. So, um, other question, you're the DJ at the fireworks, Woodward and Jefferson, you get to play two songs. What songs you playing?
Jeez, um, I would play what's that? This, um, I know a lot of songs, but don't know the names of the songs.
Who's the artist?
So first of all, my sister is the DJ, so I would definitely have her.
You would defer?
No, 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 I wouldn't defer. Probably if she was somebody nearby, you know, what's that song? I don't know, I would play-
She's like, your personal Shazam?
Oh, yeah, my sister.
People be looking at you like, what is going on? Then your sister be like, oh, yeah.
She is, she is. You know, I would play a song with, what's that song by Justin Timberlake and, um, um, Jay-Z? It's pretty hype. Or did they just have that concert together?
The Suit and Tie?
Yeah, 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 yeah. I'd play that, I like Holy Grail.
Okay, or, or Holy Grail, okay, both of those are like, that shows your fashion show. I think Suit and Tie, I don't think I've ever been in any fashion experience of Suit and Tie is in play. So for people, I mean, it makes sense. Cause the, the, the way the music is open. The lyrics. It walks like, it makes sense.
See, walk, yeah, I love it.
I, I got you.
Yeah, you get it.
There we go, you rocking with that, and-
What would you play?
Those people don't ask, so, okay, as of today.
Today, oh, okay.
Definitely, and this is usually like a classic one, just cause I like Felipe Win and everything he did with the Good Brothers. But we definitely going, not just knee deep, Parliament Funkadelic. And, and then, um, and then we gonna go, shout out to Oak Park, we gonna go Mob Life, the old boy Cash Out. We gonna, we gonna party it up and party it up. So, last question. You can rename Woodward after One Detroit, who would it be and why?
If I can name what?
Rename Woodward. One Detroit, who would it be and why?
Well, One Detroit. You know what? I would name it Benny Napoleon Drive.
That's deep, and they're actually naming a street in, in his honor this weekend, so. Benny, um, Benny's work in politics, um, especially also from the sheriff's office, when you talk about gun safety. He was a big advocate of people turning in. Old pistols and stuff, so. Uh, and, uh, his loss through COVID, uh, really opened up the lens for many others to be like, okay, we need to take this very serious, so, um. Rest in peace Benny, rest in peace.
I would say why? Because, you know, I, he's definitely, or has been the gateway to me even thinking about me even trying to make a change in the way that I'm doing it, so, yeah.
I love it, I love it, so this is Detroit is Different, thank you so much.
Thank you, this was very cool, laid back, very chill, nice studio, thank you.
Thanks, thanks, we gonna, we gonna get you back once you ripping and running. Down in Lansing.
Detroit is Different is where you get information, artistry, history, music, and even comedy. Detroit is Different, a home for the culture of Detroit. Visit online at detroitisdifferent.com today.